There we go. So I'll bring our committee, the whole meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Seeing none, again, if one should arise during the course of meeting, feel free to declare it. We have three delegations today. The first is, I welcome Darlene Lamberty here today. She is from the Center Grade Health Services Foundation and she wishes to speak to us about the ambulatory care department naming opportunity. Welcome Darlene.
Thank you. Warden, counselors, C A O, all in present, thank you for having me here today. I am here to bring you good news. Because of your strong ties to healthcare and the generosity that you have shown our foundation in support of the new Markdale Hospital, Center Grade Health Services Foundation would like to extend to you our highest honor and offer you an opportunity to name the ambulatory care department in the new Markdale Hospital. Our ambulatory care department is the largest in all of the Bright Shores rural sites. There are a couple of clinics that run out of this department currently, but there are plans for many, many more to come. We anticipate that this will be a very busy and a high-profile department. So it would be our honor to have your plaque on the wall acknowledging the support that Gray County gave to our hospital through the Together in Care campaign. I ask that you consider this offer and confirm that you wish to accept this naming. Does anyone have any questions with this?
Certainly Darlene, that's a very generous offer. We appreciate that. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you Darlene for coming here today because I know that next to Gray Highlands, Gray County is the second largest donor to that foundation toward that hospital. And I don't know, Mr. Warden, do we need a motion to accept that or a discussion? But I think that it's something that is much to be in place and I think we need to be moving forward with that naming opportunity.
Yeah, I think a motion would be appropriate. Are you making a motion? Okay, Counselor McQueen, second of a Counselor DeBreen. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Excellent. Well, that is very generously, as I said, accepted. Thank you very much Darlene for coming and offering that. We support healthcare in Gray County 100% so. I'll just get you to turn that microphone back on.
Go off on me. There we go. I just want to thank you for having me here today and accepting this naming opportunity. We hope that this offer of the departmental naming confirms that Center Grade Health Services Foundation appreciates your support and considers you a strong partner in regional healthcare. And I also want to thank you for all that you do because it really matters. So thank you very much for having me.
Thank you again Darlene. Thank you. Oh, Counselor McQueen.
Just to follow up, Mr. Warden and Darlene, so when this happens, is there going to be a little bit of an event? So when that shows up and there's naming, is there going to be? Because I think it's important that you, Mr. Warden, would be there. So through you to the speaker.
There we go. When the plaques are manufactured and installed, and thank you very much for putting that up on the screen. That's where the plaque will be housed. You'll see it's right in the main lobby. I would like to have you all in so that you can see it, view the hospital, view your name on the wall, and maybe we'll have a little bit of a celebration. I think that would be a great, a great thing.
Excellent. We're always up for a celebration. Thank you Darlene. Our second delegation is scheduled for 10:45. Our second delegation is actually Integrity Commissioner, so I'm thinking they're going to be virtual. So they're not here yet. But our third delegation is Nancy Johnston from Sweeney and Associates, McSweeney and Associates. So I think, come on ahead Nancy, we'll hear your deputation now and welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay, so just. Oh, you're ending the show one. Great. Right.
So Savannah's gonna maybe give a little intro here, maybe. I'm just, I'm not, is that, okay, sure. She says sure.
Thank you, Mr. Warden County Council. Really pleased to have Nancy here with us today. She also drove from Ottawa to be here to talk about all of the workouts been done over the last eight months. I honestly can't believe it's been eight months. Time has flown, but I feel like we hit gold with the dream team here, working with Nancy and with Kevin and Erica and Ian. It has been just wonderful. So we're going to tag team this a little bit. Nancy's going to talk about all of the things that led to the development of the strategy. And then when I do the council report, I will talk about the strategy items, but she's going to stick around so that we can tag team them as well. So I will hand it over to Nancy.
Thanks Savannah. So good morning. As Savannah said, I'm Nancy Johnson. I've been the project manager on this strategy since February. First met Savannah and Steve at the Edco Conference, and so we've had a really great relationship, I think, since that point. I'm really happy to be able to present the Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan. And as Savannah said, just the process really is the first thing that we're going to go through. So Gray County is great. It's, we are the great connectors. So as great as we understand and know, Gray County covers an expansive geographic area and results in a number of partners, including upper-level government, community partners, regional partners and local government. Along with that, there's 12,295 businesses, 100,000, over 100,000 residents and 3 million visitors. So that's a lot of people, a lot of organizations. And so Together Gray County and its partners sort of provide the services and set the environment for success. As we are all aware, it's it's all about building the county, the Great Reset is all about building the county's building on the county's previous departmental strategies. It's also about carrying forward the made in Gray approach and celebrating what holds Gray, holds on to who Gray is. It's also about providing direction and guidance to Gray County's economic development tourism and cultural activities for both the short and long term. As we know, Gray County is a unique and very special place in the world with its stunning natural landscape anchored by Niagara Skartman and Georgian Bay. And we can really see that today on this beautiful fall day. It has a quality of life that is second to none where residents can enjoy their everyday life and home at work and in the community and do that with joy. The economic, social and environmental and cultural fabric has room to grow and really be nurtured and protected. This is just a process that we followed throughout the last eight months. We did a really extensive document review which covered approximately 30 documents. And those 30 documents were not just Gray County documents, but also municipal partner documents as well. We set out and discovered sort of what was happening in the community. We created a situational analysis. We defined what the community was all about. So we did consulting with a number of community organizations and people across the Gray County. We developed the plan. We built the plan. We we developed a score which is a SWOT analysis. It's a McSweeney SWOT analysis. It goes, it talks about strengths, challenges, opportunities, aspirations and results. We had a working session. We did staff consultations. We went through committee consultations, developed the actions, a master plan. Which this is why it's taken about eight months. And now we're at the point where we're delivering and presenting the count, presenting to council. We developed a situational analysis and this was a very in-depth, comprehensive situational analysis sort of based on stats and data. So it was really that quantitative perspective that we were looking at through the situational analysis. It actually is attached to the report. You can take a look at that and it has quite, quite detailed information. It was really helps highlight what makes Gray County strong and it really talks about the helping to understand sort of the underlying trends in the county and setting a baseline for future investment. So really looking at sort of population growth being as a main one is being the fact that it has grown quite substantially in, from 2016 to 2021. On the other hand, we did a consultation process and that was more around the whole qualitative analysis and looking, just trying to paint a picture of really what Gray County is all about. We did engage 45 participants through one-on-one interviews. Those are phone interviews. We had 60 participants across eight focus groups, 198 respondents through an online survey and 45 participants during April's working session. So during this, this, these consultations, it was, we had questions around both economic development and tourism as well as Gray Roots. So after that, we developed, after all the analysis that we did, we developed the themes and actions. So it was quite an exhaustive consultation process and we continued with that once the themes and actions were completed. There was an external consultation process which the Economic Development and Tourism Committee Leadership Team and McSweeney worked, worked on. There were seven staff sessions, staff working to take the consultation findings and hone in on the key messages and findings. This was a really collaborative process, led to co-develop strategic actions. And once completed, there were three final reviews were taken with Economic Development Tourism Culture and PDUCK. And just to also say that there, a lot of the consultations that we did were very, were not involving staff, the original ones, so that we could really have a good idea of what the community is looking for. So from that, we determined priority areas that were really important to Gray County. So they're broken down into economic development and tourism and Gray Roots. So there are five priority actions around economic development and tourism. First priority action is leadership and collaboration and that's really about building cohesion in the county. The second one is about investment ready and being investment ready and building that capacity to attract businesses and be ready for them. The third one is about business retention and expansion and that is about building pride in the community. Entrepreneurship and innovation is around building networks. And priority five is destination development and that's around building place. So we've got the five priorities areas for economic development tourism. We looked at Gray Roots as well. Priority one is around leadership and collaboration. And I think the first thing to talk about really is that there's been recent trends, trends in museums that really show an increased focus in displaying and diversity of perspectives. It's more collaborative and experiential. So that really came out in the whole consultation process. So priority one around leadership and collaboration is really to have Gray Roots be recognized as a cultural hub. Priority two is around inclusive storytelling and presenting the complete story around Gray County. The third one is about interactive experiences and really developing interactive experiences at Gray Roots. The fourth one is around destination development and recognizing that Gray Roots will be a key tourism asset for the county. And the fifth one is around innovative practices and really prioritizing programming and doing things differently. As Savannah mentioned, she will be talking more in more detail about the actions that came out of these priority areas. So I just want to, on behalf of McSweeney, the McSweeney team, I just want to thank you for hiring us and working closely with us to develop your your economic development tourism and culture master plan. It's been a real pleasure working with you and with the community of Gray. And I really want to say, give a special thanks to Savannah and her team for making the process really enjoyable and smooth and fun. Thank you.
Well, thank you Nancy. That's a very succinct report there. Thank you for that. And I'm not surprised your comments about Savannah, her and her team do a wonderful job here for us. Now noting that Savannah's report is coming, are there any questions or discussion directly related to Nancy's presentation? Not seeing any? Thank you very much. And I understand you will be hanging around. Excellent. I can't speak to what's for lunch, but I'm sure you'll be able to stay for that as well. That's, that's what all of us are here for, right? Okay, so it's not quite 10:45 yet? Sure, let's do the first. Do you want to go into that? Okay, all right. Well, Savannah, do you want to? We'll go straight into Savannah's report when, after Nancy's presentation is fresh in our minds. So the motion is there. It's 7A. Would someone care to move that motion? Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Pringle. Savannah, welcome. Sure, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you so much Sarah, and thank you Warden and Council. Really proud to be in front of you today and present our proposed Economic Development Tourism Culture Master Plan. Like I said, I cannot believe it's been eight months. It seems like yesterday that we started this process, but it has been full of conversation and consultation. And I think that is so important to the work that we do to really understand what is happening in the environment and figure out how we can best deliver our success. And I'm really proud of the consultation process and the three very strategic loops that we did where it was this constant back and forth to our partners and external community and then back to staff. And this back and forth really helped us hone in on what was going to be possible at the end of the day. So we were listening to the needs of the community, understanding what is changing, what's different, but then talking to our staff who really are experts in the work that they do and seeing what that final product would be to give the best outcome possible. And not having staff involved in any of those preliminary conversations and consultations was also very important because it meant we had honest input. So I think that is what really grounded the strategy is the fact that everybody was very, very honest and they told us the good, the bad and the ugly. And that was really important for setting the stage for where we are today. So I'm going to take you through some slides. I won't go through all of the details because it is a lengthy document, but I do want to talk about some of the highlights. So thinking of the vision and values. As Gray County and as a corporation, we're going through our strategic planning corporate lead right now. But we recognize that we're better growing together. And collectively, the values of integrity, collaboration, equity and sustainability guide our actions and decisions forward. And that is absolutely cemented through this master plan. For Economic Development Tourism Culture, everything we do is for our people. So collectively, we are working to create an enabling environment for people and business to invest. At the same time, we're working to create a sense of pride and belonging in our communities where people can enjoy their lived experience. In order to realize where we're going, it was also important to realize where we've come from and where that bar is now. So collectively, with the work that our team has done and all of your staff locally, our businesses and community partners, we have raised the bar significantly in the last five years. So when we talk about the Great Reset, it isn't about starting from scratch. It's about realizing where we've now set that bar and that's the new foundation that we're working from. So we want to carry the best of the best work forward. We want to add new focus where it's needed now. And we need to give ourselves permission to say no to things that don't make sense anymore because we've already achieved them or they just can't be a priority at this given time. So I wanted to share, in the PDUCK report that we did, there was a lengthy list of some of the highlights that we've achieved collectively over the last five years. So I won't go through that, but I did want to share a reflection in terms of the statistics because I do think that this is really important to understand. All of this has happened while half of the time has been part of a pandemic. So it is significant. We have grown by over 2,000 businesses. Our Business Enterprise Center, so this is two staff, have had over 2,500 inquiries. They've had 658 one-hour consultations minimum. They've offered 123 grants and hosted 141 workshops and events. In terms of the digital service squad, we've had 149 business consultations and 21 training events. Thinking of the tourism reach that we've had in the last five years on visit grays, over 1.3 million that we have reached and through social media in the last three years is over 2.4 million reached. So it is significant. Gray Roots visitation, we're over 105,000 visitors. We've had 676 kids camp attendees. Over 5,300 education program students come through our doors. And 18,000 plus event and program attendees. In terms of the programs we've offered, about 193 education programs, we've done 46 events and 47 exhibits and logged over 25,000 volunteer hours in the last five years. So it has been impressive and I really want to take a moment to realize what has been accomplished in the last five years because it really is a testament to the staff that we have as Team Gray here at Gray County and in our member municipalities and partners. So what is our role? This is a question that we have asked ourselves all the way through this journey. When we look at where Gray County sits, the resources we have, the reach we have, how is it different from our municipalities and our partners so that we can really deliver something that is of value? And one of the biggest things that came out through all of the consultations and discussions we've done is that while we share the same geography, we offer a different view because we're always looking at the regional level and thinking about the regional level. Where at the municipal level, you have to be so focused on the ground and so localized and that mix is really, really important. We need that attention on the ground, but we also need that regional view. And it's when those two pieces come together, that's where we see the magic happen. And that is what is built through this entire master plan. Collaboration is our core mandate. So as the E D C C team, this is what we are telling you, we are committed to, that we want to foster systems approach and work in concert with our colleagues and our partners to share resources, build capacity and bring value. We're going to focus on internal and external communications to be the best leaders, ambassadors and champions we can possibly be for Gray County. Talking about priority actions, that slide looked much better on the printed version, but this is why I don't do tech. So I'm going to take you through the priority actions. They're going to be on the screen, but we're not going to talk about each of them in detail because we'll be here all morning. And I know that you don't want to hear from me for that long. So starting with economic development and tourism priorities. You'll notice through the master plan, it is one master plan, but we have two very distinct sides because we have two very distinct areas in our department. So the first we're going to look at is economic development tourism. As Nancy mentioned, priority one is all about leadership and collaboration. This is about building our cohesion so that we can speak with one voice in a strong and effective way. We have a couple of examples that we've heard through the consultations process and through the work that we've been doing to realize that there are more opportunities for us to build Team Gray. And that is what priority one is all about. Looking at those opportunities to be able to formally create memorandums of understandings with each of our municipalities because we know you're all at a different spot. And we shouldn't be providing the exact same service every, every way. We should be looking at what is the best approach for you individually so that we're providing you that service. Priority two, this is a shift. So you'll notice it says investment ready and non-investment attraction. We have realized also through all of the work over the last eight months that we just aren't fully ready for investment attraction. We need to take a step back and focus on the readiness part so that we can build capacity locally across the region and with our partners. So the work that is here is something that I know our member municipalities are very excited about because this is some of the work that you just don't have the resources on the ground to be able to do. But if we combine our resources and we take a collective approach, we will be a much better step. It doesn't mean that we will not do any investment attraction activities. It just means that the focus and the priority is on that readiness piece and where it makes sense. We have a great investment attraction strategy. We'll be able to use that when and where it matters. Priority three is about business retention and expansion. This is absolutely key and it is about caring for the businesses who already call Gray County home first and foremost. We know that this is where pride is built. This is where our community stands up and celebrates one another and what is possible to do business in Gray. And when a new business is looking to come to Gray, we're not the first ones to get the phone call. It's the businesses are on the ground. So we need to know that they are happy and that things are going well for them. So there's a lot that happens in here through the Made in Gray program such as job fairs and summits and workshops and the mixers that we host so that we can bring business and government and community partners together in one location. Priority four is around entrepreneurship and innovation. So this really is about building those networks and understanding that there's a lot that we can achieve if we do have local and regional networks as, as part of one broader strategy and priority. So we're looking at the Business Enterprise Center and Catapult Grabbers already do exist as your number one entrepreneurial services, but we want to continue to grow that because as you've seen, it is working very well and we're seeing a lot of outcome in our business community, which is speaking to the business growth that we've had. And last but not least, priority five is about destination development. And this one holds a really dear place in my heart because when we talk about destination development and building a place, it really is about building that lived experience of everyday life that every one of us enjoys and every one of us holds high and is part of what attracts people and retains them here. This is about all of the things that happen inside of work, outside of work, and tourism plays a significant part in this because when you think of, you know, your after-hours from work and where you go to find those enjoyments and where you bring your family and your friends, it is almost all tourism-based. So this is a huge bucket and there's a lot of work to happen in here, but it will have significant impact on our retention abilities as well. Gray Roots Museum and Archives Priority Actions. You'll notice that some are similar, but they all have a little bit of a different flavor because there's a lot that we can do together and we realize that by merging the three departments into one. So looking at priority one as leadership and collaboration. This is very much about that hub and spoke model and realizing that Gray Roots is the largest museum we have in the region. We have amazing museums locally, one about to celebrate 50 years, which is very exciting. And what can we do to be able to support our individuals and our museums and our organizations and spread that cultural impact right across Gray County? Inclusive storytelling, the heart of this is all about building and maintaining strong relationships that hopefully one day can turn into partnerships. It is about telling a better story of Gray County, a more inclusive story of Gray County and bringing the people to the table to do so, so that it's not always us who are charged with that. Interactive experiences, this is something that we have been trialing over the last couple of years and it is working very well. If you've been out to Gray Ridge lately, you've noticed there's a lot more hands-on activity and that's part of attracting diverse learners and realizing that not everybody takes information in the same way. So we want to continue to hone that and bring more interactive experiences and continue to grow our markets based on the strategy. Destination development is about realizing that Gray Roots is one of our best tourism assets and it's in our department, which is really amazing. So we want to be able to build that and we also know that we've lost a lot of our tourism information hubs regionally in the last couple of years. This is an opportunity to bring tourism back to Gray Roots and really create that hub so that all of the visitors who are coming by have the information that they need to be able to go and experience Gray County as a whole. And priority five is about looking inward. So this is looking at the business practices that we are doing. And there's a couple of big ones in here, but it is about prioritizing program over new construction. So we are giving ourselves permission for the next five years to not talk about new builds in Morrison Heritage Village. And you'll notice through the budget process that we've removed all levy contributions for the next 10 years because we think that that's something we have to do. We need to be able to use the space that we already have and really prioritize programming to get more people in to Gray Roots and more people engaged. So that was a significant change. And we also really want to be able to talk to the N E C about our property permissions to allow us to bring this strategy to life because right now there's a lot that we would love to be able to do and we just can't. So those are some of the big pieces under the innovative practices. So where will this lead us? What's our vision for the next 10 years in economic development and tourism 10 years from now? We, Gray County in connection with our member municipalities, will be active as Team Gray. We are now, but we've got so much more that we can do. Where we collaborate through trust and we see mutual success. We speak with one voice. We achieve goals effectively in a timely manner. And we're sharing our resources so that we're not wasting them. Gray County will share a cohesive vision that's carried out through effective and true collaboration to benefit us all. Gray County and its partners have access to shared tools and resources at their fingertips and have moved from investment readiness to attraction. Will further diversify moving clean energy, healthcare and culture industries from emerging into core sectors, joining alongside agriculture, manufacturing and tourism to build our robust and foundational economy. Gray and its partners will continue to flex their innovative and entrepreneurial muscle through Sidneyham Campus to feed thriving regional networks. And our world-class four-season destination is being built through well-planned investment, enriching the lives and experiences of visitors and residents alike. For Gray Roots, 10 years from now, Gray Root sits in the foreground of culture and connection in the region, leading by example and assisting others to build capacity. Diverse relationships and partnerships are established and incorporated into the heart of operations at Gray Roots. Experiential learning is achieved through workshops, interactive displays and different methods of programming. Experiential learning is achieved through workshops, interactive displays and different methods of programming using arts, technology and skills. And Gray Roots is top of mind destination for tourists and residents to learn, experience, connect and reflect. And Gray Roots has more control over site use and can generate more revenue through diverse offerings and increased attendance. This is where we'd like to be in ten years from now. Together we're better. This is Team Gray and we really are your biggest champions of being Team Gray and we hope that you feel that. When you work with us and when we come to you with updates about the work that's being done. We feel very confident with what we're proposing to you today and we hope that you feel the same. We have received unanimous support from our economic development tourism culture staff, from our member municipality staff. From our planning and economic development committee and from our community partners. So we feel really good about being able to present this to you today. And they have all had a huge role in developing this. So as Nancy said. We have really tag teamed this process where McSweeney and economic development tourism culture staff. Have worked together on this to make sure that we're bringing you something that fits and that we know and we have confidence in. That we can build on and we can actually make an impact for you and your municipalities. So I do want to thank our staff because. The expertise, the dedication that they've had in this, it really gives us confidence that we're going to move forward in a meaningful impactful way. To care for our people and our place, past, present and future. And that is the end of the presentation and if you have any questions, Nancy and I are here to answer.
Thank you Savannah and that is indeed a. Comprehensive and. Prideful. Report. Thank you. So just from the chair, two things. Number one. My uh, my granddaughter loves popsicles, popo, popo. Popsicles. Wouldn't it be cool if she could buy a popsicle at the general store in Morston Village? Currently she can't do that because the N E C says no. So this is notice the N E C, we're coming for you. And second, there's one line here that just jumps out at me in my report and I'll paraphrase a little bit and it says. This plan and its actions gives great confidence that together, and there's that word again, together. We'll move forward in a meaningful and impactful way to care for our people and our place. Past, present and future. That line just jumped out at me and I thought that says a lot of. Uh, the report right there. So enough for me. Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and thank you very much for that report. Just follow up on N E C. How are we making out with that? And this may be involved Randy. How are we making out with that expansion of the land that's been donated for build out on on Gray Roots? That's that's sort of the future coming forward, right? We need to move forward on that.
Scott, you'd like to take a run at that, please?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your question, Councilor McQueen. Uh, so there's sort of two phases going on right now. To those neighboring lands, what was referred to as 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 the Ralds property. Uh, the first phase is working with uh, Gray Roots and the school board. Uh, to transition the Chesley High Skills Major in Agriculture Program. I probably got the order of those words wrong, but they're all in there, I believe. Um, and and we've actually pleased to report through the hard work of of Jill at Gray Roots. Uh, we've just had the development permit applications conditionally approved uh, to be able to transition that. That program over to the Gray Roots or over to the Ralds slash Gray Roots sites. Uh, and and the hope is that an agreement will come back before county council in in the next month or so. The Niagara Government Plan Amendment Application for the Bro- broader Ralds property hasn't been submitted yet, but our our hope is to do that soon. I realize I've I've uh, come before this council and our agricultural advisor committee and said that a few times now, but but we believe we're getting very close. We have an agreed upon site plan that both the school board, uh, Gray Roots and the egg societies can agree on. So it's it's up to county staff now. Uh, to go ahead and submit that application to the N E C and then work through their approvals process.
Thank you Scott. Anyone, oh, Councilor McQueen, go ahead.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Warden and thank you Scott for that update. Um, so. I think it's important that a few things move. Keep this moving along. I know. A number of years back, N E C and I'm, I guess I look at my colleague next to me who who is a representative on a commission. And I'm not sure if they're getting back into policy meetings throughout. The province of Ontario. And those that probably remember, I'm going to say maybe two thousand fourteen, fifteen, or maybe there before. They had, they had actually a policy meeting and a and a regular meeting at um, Gray Roots. At that time that was presented with regards to that idea, the plan. At that time, the commission had supported that in principle. Certainly that's a whole brand new commission. Um, certainly I would say in that application to you, Mr. Ward, maybe you need to put on that application that there is some commercial. Um, activities, selling popsicles and stuff. And I would also offer that when it comes to the commission that. Yourself, I would enjoy, I would join you for my experience of being on the N E C and others to make a presentation to the N E C of how important it is. To move forward with this because, you know, you have Gray Roots that has is doing some remarkable, great things over the last. Twenty years plus or whatever it is. I just think it's important and I know when they came here. And you know, have the, you know, I know there was a presentation being at grave root to that meeting at the time. You know, it's about the commission that makes the decision. Certainly the plan is what it is and stuff like that, but it's the commission makes the decision. And so a delegation in front of that. So I think whenever that comes forward, I think we should think about doing that. And uh, and you know, and since, you know, obviously our colleague here. Councilor Nielsen is is a representative on that commission along with everyone else, but I think. I think Scott, maybe you might have been at that meeting. There was a few others that were there. I don't know if you were there, I thought you might have been there, but anyway. Sometimes you have to. Present your case. Present what you're all about because the biggest um. Stumble with the N E C's plan is they do not recognize commercial activities on that, even if it was for a um. A photo shoot for a wedding that you're not doing, they still don't want, it still doesn't recognize that is. It drove me nuts for the ten plus years I was on there, but just because how, you know, it's there to enjoy as well. Anyway, I could go on and on and on, Mr. Warden, but I think it's important that when that time comes. We really roll up our sleeves and make that presentation, you know, through representatives and staff and everything else. Because it is important for our area, it's important for the region, obviously working with school kids and everything else. At a one time. We did talk about working with the N E C because at one time they had proposed a um. Uh, a center, I think there was a sign just south of Long Sound, uh, interpretive center. And when they came and we talked, I, you know, sort of talked a little bit of could they be involved? In part of this uh, growth part as an interpretive center for the N E C. Because, you know, we're smack dab into that and sometimes working with is better than working against. And so just, you know, through our our staff and that, maybe that's some ideas there because it's celebrating agriculture as part of that, what they wanted to expand on here and. Through, I know the eggs, the egg um, uh. The local agricultural society wants to have their fairs there and stuff like that. It's all about. Showcasing everything about what's good about Gray County in the province and N E C. So. Anyway, I'll stop there because I think continue on, but I think it's, you gotta show the passion of why it's so important. To have that expansion, plus the donation of that land. For that purpose, I think is is such a highlight and and needs to be recognized. So. I know we got it with 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 that process, you've got to keep plugging along, but let's keep plugging along and keep pushing, pushing it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McQueen. Good point. Good, uh, many good points in there. Any other questions for our Councilor Greg? You had a point.
Uh, thanks, Warden. Milton, I just want to speak directly to the report here. Um, I've got a couple of questions. You did mention. Uh, why are we not ready for investment attraction as an outcome? Or we were not in the last plan? So that's one question is identifying um. Accountability, I guess, to be placed where it should be and that's probably at council then in terms of why were we not uh, ready for investment attraction? There's a couple of references in the report. Um, speaking to like a senior leadership summit. Um, digital squad, a couple of these speak to. Potential actions that other um, partners. Already do. So I'm going to use Chamber of Commerce's, that's the obvious one. Why would we duplicate something that's already being done when we should be taking uh, more advantage of. Of functions that are probably out there. It's a hundred and fifty dollars to support a ticket to a Chamber of Commerce dinner. As opposed to many thousands of dollars in creating our own. Um, and delivering our own functions. A digital squad. Um, I think back to Digital Main Street, an initiative started by the um, by the wind government. So it's been in place for many years. Um. Is there overlap with what other arms of government are already doing? And how do you identify that and steer your team away from duplicating and keeping us back on track? Um. Another. Comment is, I thought maybe we would see a little bit more. When we're looking long-term. Identifying opportunities uh, or challenges with downtowns. So um, the consultant would bring a wealth of experience with them. Uh, this is a problem that's occurring all over, not a problem. But it is a problem. It's a challenge. Um, a lot of downtowns uh, rely upon mom and pop type establishments. And um, being able to have these um, shops continue. Beyond retirement is is a challenge and and then downtowns are left with vacant storefronts. Uh, so it's pretty pervasive across Gray County. So are there opportunities? What are we doing to identify initiatives that? We can really hone in on that are measurable in terms of like clear challenges that are very defined right in front of us. Um. I guess that kind of leads me, I find the documents a little bit wordy opposed to like succinct opportunities identified. In terms of like a grants vision of economic development. Uh, is there manufacturing capacity that we would look to approve upon? Where would we center that? Uh, industrial processes? And then how would we measure that? Um, because as it is, it just. To me seems a little bit just wordy visionary instead of incorporating some more. Uh, clearly defined opportunity. What are we lacking in this area? What are the key things that we're going after? We going after nuclear? This is how we're doing it. How are we incorporating that into a master plan? Um, I guess those are my comments. Just, there's a little bit of commentary too. I'll just mention and thank you to C O Wingrove for providing me. Uh, the amount of routes. Um, for the public transportation, the G T R, there's a reference in the commentary later on in the document about twenty-six thousand rides. Um, I think it's good to always have context. Um, so it's nice. To have. Uh, some. Um. Uh, just I guess acknowledgement of how or what's the expense uh, in terms of generating that twenty-six thousand rides and it's about sixty-eight hundred. Runs per year um, to to generate that. So um, just I guess context and. Clear and and vision visionary and definable outcomes is something that I was maybe anticipating more of in the document.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. I am hoping I got them all written down, but I'm going to start backwards and if I miss anything, let me know. Uh, so the commentary at the back where we talk about transit, housing and climate change. That is specifically because we heard that over and over again through consultation, but when we ask ourselves as economic development tourism and culture, what is our role? Those are not our role. There are things that we can do that feed to them and that assist them and help move them along. But taking leadership on those are not an area that our department should focus on. So we included them at the back to be able to highlight what is actually happening in Gray County. And where we have an ability to make a difference and make a change. So that's why that full context isn't there. Uh, it's just to be able to provide, this is happening in Gray. Um, so that people are aware and then we can have more conversation about it when we get there, in which case we pulled Stephanie right in because she can speak to it um, with expertise and I can't. Uh, in terms of the sectors, the sectors that we've outlined specifically, so our core sectors are manufacturing, tourism, agriculture. We're seeing emerging sectors in clean energy and culture industries and in healthcare. Now, healthcare plays a kind of a funny spot because it is a core sector, but the area that we can have influence around the research and the things happening with isotopes, for example. And the work that the city is doing for us to be able to support, that is an emerging side of the healthcare industry. So. We have an outside of tourism, this document doesn't say we're going to do this for agriculture, we're going to do this for tourism, we're going to do this for clean energy. Because all of these actions. Work to be able to advance all of those different sectors. So the whole point of. The priority actions that we have in here are what can we pick and choose at the proper time with the proper partners to advance those sectors forward? So that's why you don't see sections specific to each sector. Um, in terms of the investment readiness. We need land, we need resources, we need serviced land available and we don't have it. We are turning inquiries away because we just don't have the space and it takes a long time to get the land ready. And we know some of the large projects like our T C Energy, the proposed pump storage project, that is going to need a lot of space. When we were working with Bruce Power and the Clean Energy Frontier, the work that we did looking at what land and buildings we had available. The list was minimal. Now Owen sounds in a better spot because you do have those large industrial parcels. And buildings that were there and you made a good decision not to get rid of them. So now you can refill them and they are being filled. So that is an investment readiness piece, but not everybody has that ability. And then we think of Southgate and look how far you've gone and selling all of your future. Um, development opportunities like, like they're gone. You had a lot and now they're gone. So there's a lot of work that we need to be able to do collectively, but that's going to take looking at. Um. All of the partnerships municipally because a lot of that development area is right on the edge of municipalities. So that's part of why you see the note about municipal partnerships and or boundary adjustment case studies that we can do and tours that we can bring you on to be able to show you what's worked elsewhere. Um, in hopes that we can unlock some of that development potential that we have around the area. Uh, on the investment inquiry side too, normally when investor comes, we have about twenty-four hours to have everything writing in front of them. And staff need to be there and ready to tour. And we also don't have that capacity. Most of our member municipalities don't have an E D O. They don't have a tourism person. Their C A O is wearing multiple hats. All of your staff are wearing multiple hats. So we really considered the resources available. With our team and all of your teams and our community partners, realizing everyone is at capacity. Uh, so trying to figure out what was realistic and that's why we are taking that step back um, to the investment readiness side. In terms of the downtowns, again, thinking about what is the role that the county can play in that, knowing that those downtowns are in your municipalities. It's worked through the Business Enterprise Center. And helping businesses grow, helping them start up. We know there's a real appetite for bricks and mortar businesses. Covid has shown us that people want to be together. They want to be downtown. They want to be able to be in an area that has mass. Uh, so that is an area that we're able to help. In terms of festivals and events, that's not something that we would be doing. But it's certainly something that we can promote through the tourism arm of the department. Uh, the digital service squad is actually the provincial program, so that is what we run. Uh, we don't have a separate. Um. Project that we go, we were funded by the ministry to do that. That funding runs out um, mid-year next year. We're hopeful that it will come back, but at this point we don't have any indication that it will. So that's part of the advocacy role of us saying we see real value in here. Same with our Business Enterprise Center, uh, that is provincially funded. Uh, we do have to top that up because our funding does not keep up with the cost. It's been reduced a couple of times. Uh, and we're still waiting on word that we'll get the contract back next year. So that's a risk that we'll talk to you about at budget time. Uh, but we're definitely not recreating the wheel on any of those and I think we spent a lot of time working with staff and partners. Making sure that everything in here was something that was new or something that was different. So when we look at the annual leadership forum. That's for you, for your councils, for your senior leadership staff and for our leadership staff. To talk about these things and how do we move forward and become investment ready? How do we build Team Gray? How do we share a voice? When we're thinking about advocacy opportunities, what is it that really is the pain point that we can do work on to be able to go forward? Whether it's through our C A O at A M O or through other um, realms that we have through Western Ontario Warden's Caucus um, or others, but it can also. Go down to the ground or to our community partners. So Georgian College, for example, the advocacy work that we've done around that. Um, realizing through consultation with our business and our sector roundtables. That there's a lot that we can do. So it was putting that business piece together and bringing it forward, but that's not an opportunity for public, that leadership forum, that is for you and for staff. Um, to be able to really have those discussions and that's why if you look at the evaluation component, we don't have separate evaluation recommendations. We've built the evaluation into the items that we're doing as part of the strategy because we want to make sure that it's constant. We're constantly checking in. We're looking at the stats, we're having conversations with you and with our partners to make sure we're moving the bar where it needs to go and that gives us the flexibility to maneuver if we need to. Did I miss anything? No.
Okay, thanks for that response, Savannah. Appreciate it.
Good questions, good answers. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Mattressaw, she had a a point.
Thank you. Through you, the Chair, Ms. Myers. Um, thank you. It was a delight to read this material. I was really excited to see what you're proposing in terms of the shifting. And the refocusing that you're doing. Um, certainly I advocate the same as you, that success breeds success. That that the businesses need to be in a healthy state in order to be able to say, yeah, this is a great. in order to be able to say, yeah, this is a great place to do business. You should bring yours here too. It is, it's painful to us when we, when we have existing businesses who, you know, I'm thinking of an example in the Blue Mountains where they can't take on a third shift and they have to turn down ten thousand dollar contracts because they can't find people who can come here and find a place that they can actually live. And these are professionals trying to come to this area. So with that, my second point is, is I, I appreciate the way that you've presented the housing component as, as the section, the way in which it's been designed. Because I think it's, it's important not to dilute the leadership capacity that, that you have within your economic development field. But at the same time, it's a statement that we are not working in silos here in Gray County, that we have interdepartmental leadership collaborating with each other, saying this particular item, we need your help on, or, or could you please build your programming so it matches what we're trying to do? That's vital when the federal MPs of the Liberal Caucus came in late summer, came and did their, the Ontario members of the federal Liberals came and did their caucus, their annual caucus meeting. They came to the Blue Mountains to do that and they invited local mayors to come and speak about economic development. That was the topic. And each one of us, myself, Mayor Hamlin and Mayor Measures, each one of us got up there and said, great, you want to talk about economic development? Let's talk about housing. So I, I really appreciate that this document is reflecting that same momentum that we're all trying to say that it needs to be done that, but that you're being careful not to say we'll do it all, that it has to be done in conjunction. I'm also really pleased to see that your shift programming versus building more. I think both with Gray Roots, but all of our, all of our experiential tourism, for example, in, you know, all of the independent businesses that are up and operating in each one of our municipalities have so much to offer if they can build their own capacity. And I think that's a really healthy way to do it. We are getting close to three million visitors annually over in the town Blue Mountains. And nothing would make me happier is to keep them moving to enhance their experience further and further into Gray County and not just by default, just looking backwards into, into Simcoe County and never getting as far as such as the gems like Gray Roots that we have. So I think by providing more and more programming, putting that out there, it, it is going to draw that. We don't have to work hard at bringing tourists here. We're, they're already here. What we need to do is work collaboratively to bring them through all of our nine municipalities and share with each other and get them launching from whatever direction they come, whether they come into Southgate or come into the Blue Mountains or from any other direction over on, on the Bruce County side, that they want to keep moving because there's more to explore. So thank you for all this work.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Savannah. So our, our second delegation is here now. So I'm thinking it shouldn't take too long. Why don't we do that delegation and then have a break? Or if anybody feels strongly, we could do the break now. Let's do the delegation now. Okay, so the delegation is Janice Atwood Petkovsky. And I think it's just Janice. Jeffrey isn't with her today from Principals Integrity with the annual commissioner's report. So Janice, welcome, you're online and.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Yes, Jeff's not available this morning, but Jeff and I form the firm Principals Integrity and we are your integrity commissioner and have been since 2018. So we bring before you this morning our annual report. And we always try to put a bit of information in here for really the public to understand the role of an integrity commissioner as much as anything. So integrity commissioners are a mandatory accountability officer that municipalities are required to have. And we serve a number of functions. We're available to assist on the development of policies that have an ethical perspective to provide education and training and very importantly, to provide confidential advice to individual members of council and local boards on request regarding their conduct or occurrences under the code of conduct and their obligations with respect to conflicts of interest and recognizing those. And then we are the mechanism that can look at complaints under those documents and determine whether an investigation is warranted. And if so, conduct that investigation and provide a public report to council at the conclusion. So our annual report speaks to those issues and outlines our, our role and function. And we think this is basically for Gray County Council, a good news report. We think that the framework and structures functioning as it was intended to, and that is the emphasis is on education, training and advice. And the residual ability to conduct investigations is often not required. And so in terms of the statistics in this report, you'll see that we had the opportunity to provide education and training immediately following the municipal elections of 2022 in December of this past year and which was well attended. And in the period covered by this annual report, we've had the opportunity to provide advice to members of council on three occasions. And we, we don't talk about the, the details of the advice that we give because our obligations are to maintain confidentiality and often that would reveal information about individual members. But much of the advice that we provide is often with regard to avoiding conflicts of interest. That's pretty much a standard area of interest and advice. And in terms of complaints that we have administered or looked at, we've had two complaints brought to our attention during the course of the past period covered by this annual report, which is really the past year. And in one case, the report following an investigation was brought to council. And so that matter was an opportunity for some, some takeaways. And in the second instance, the matter, when we took a closer look, was not within scope or jurisdiction. And so no investigation was conducted. So one of the things that we are able to do from our vantage point, we serve about fifty municipalities. And one of the things that we're able to do is to share some of our, I guess, observations around the province. And so we share some of those in our annual report back to you. And there are probably no huge surprises here for those who are sort of dialed into these issues around the province. One area of concern is that councils should at all times avoid leaking confidential information, and that is information that's provided in closed or information and discussions that are confidential. And there are a number of reasons for that, not the least of which is if there is a sense that members may be disclosing information that's provided confidentially in closed session, there will be a reluctance on the part of staff to fully reveal legal strategies and that kind of a thing. So it's important to maintain confidentiality of closed meetings. And that's certainly one of the takeaways that we see. Another frequent source of friction is members engaging in disrespectful or disparaging conduct or communications, whether that's interactions with the public or with staff or with each other. And now we say it's, it's important to avoid the kind of behavior that really amounts to harassment. Sometimes it's mere incivility, but if it's frequent and if it's condoned, it can really rise to bullying and harassment very quickly. Even microaggressions, if, if ignored and left unchecked, can create a very difficult work environment. We note in passing that Bill Five, which was intended to provide an opportunity for council to have a matter taken to court to remove a member of council for egregious conduct, that that bill failed on second reading. We were not disappointed at all to see that. We think that there are better avenues to pursue putting proper mechanisms in place for council to be able to constrain or provide remediation to misconduct when it is egregious. We think minor amendments to the municipal act or even regulatory amendments would suffice. We also think that the proposal to have these matters go off to court created an opportunity for a very lengthy, prolonged and expensive mechanism that might or might not ever result in a member being removed. So there's, there was a lot of, I would say a lot of noise around this particular bill when it was tabled. We think there are much better mechanisms if the province would revisit the inputs and submissions that received during its broad consultation, which occurred a couple of years ago. We think that there's much better solutions. For example, just in passing, under the Education Act, school boards have the ability to remove a trustee from a committee. They have the ability to prohibit a trustee from attending a, a board meeting. We think if councils were imbued with those powers under the municipal act, that would be much better as a course to, to constrain the behavior of, of a member if it was outlandish or egregious, that type of a thing. So we think there's better solutions than that bill provided. So it was not, we were not, we were not sorry to see that bill die in second reading. Another area that is key is for members to recognize and avoid conflicts of interest. And I, I think this is something that we've stressed throughout our, our training with councils following the elections in orientation. And we haven't seen concerns or issues arise in Gray County in this regard. So we think all in all, this is a good news report for council. It's sort of a good housekeeping, if you will, seal of approval that things seem to be functioning from our perspective, very much the way they should. Individual members seem to, when issues arise, reach out to us and get the advice that they need to avoid any transgression. So we're happy to answer any questions and we're happy to, to serve you as your integrity commissioner.
Well, certainly. Thank you, Janice, for your report. It's, as you say, a good news story. Are there any questions for Janice? Okay. Burke wishes to address council.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to bring to council's attention that we have worked with Principals Integrity for the last five years. They were appointed in 2018. So their appointment is expiring at the end of 2023, but staff will be bringing forward a report at the next meeting on next steps on for appointing an integrity commissioner for another term. So we thank Principals for all their great work and are, are very grateful for all that they've done last term.
Thank you, Tara. So not seeing any questions? I will thank you, Janice, and please extend our thanks to Jeffrey as well. We appreciate all your efforts. Okay, let's, it's a little past twenty, past eleven. Why don't we see if we can be back in our chairs by eleven thirty and we'll proceed with our meeting. So let's break for a few minutes. Oh, we need a motion to receive that report. Sorry, I apologize. Counselor Eccles and Counselor Mattressaw, it's all in favor? That is carried. Guess I was a little too anxious to get to that break. But let's have the break now. Thank you. That is carried. Guess I was a little too anxious to get to that break. But let's have the break now. Thank you.
Plan a subdivision application and a zoning amendment. Uh that plan a subdivision and the zoning uh would speak to a certain block of land being used for for multi-residential purposes. At the time of the zoning, at the time of the subdivision, um there is knowledge from from the public and staff and council to say, yep, this block of land in the northwest corner. Is going to be for multi-residential, it's going to be, you know, maybe uh twelve to fourteen units, depending on the final form of the development. Um that all gets approved by your municipal councils. In the case of a plan of subdivision, it would get approved by county committee, the whole. Uh and then you would work through the various processes, including a subdivision agreement and and in some cases, a site plan agreement. Uh the developer would come in then at the very end of the process, if if they were applying for, say, a standard plan, a condominium, condominium exemption process. And and show that they have support through through uh the municipality. They would show that they have all the administrative details tied up either in the site plan agreement or the subdivision agreement. And and really, it would be just sort of formalizing that ownership model for that multi-residential block of land. Um the the um, the current uh application process for the county, as I said, exempts um vacant land plans, a condominium. And exempts other forms of development whereby certain criteria have been met. Uh so county staffer of the opinion that if we can demonstrate that uh those criteria have been met, if we can demonstrate that uh we have uh support from the member municipality that's hosting the development. Uh then there's no practical reason why we couldn't also include uh vacant land plans, a condominium in this regard. It would also align nicely with some of the the province's uh recent legislative and policy changes, uh which are all gearing towards uh getting development or. Uh approvals in a quicker, more efficient fashion. Uh so that's sort of the coals notes here, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any. Oh, just before I do, I should say that uh legal services staff have been tremendously helpful. Uh in in drafting this report and making sure we have all our our legal bases covered. So I'd like to thank uh Michael Lither, Michael Luterno for for his uh support and and help on this one.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? I'll call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Scott. Next item is uh seven C, it's a report regarding Gray Road one nineteen and the speed limit in banks. Someone care to move this, please? Counselor Nielsen and Counselor Mackey. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh uh as uh the warden said, yes, this is uh came out of that delegation for the speed limit in banks. So you'll have your report here on page two seventy-five. Um TRCW dash twenty-one dash twenty-three. So if you look at page two seventy-six, the, all the factors that go into our Transportation Association of Canada's uh spreadsheet that kind of. You put your factors in and it kind of spits out a recommended speed at the bottom. It's kind of the way it works. There's additional factors in our own policy um that end up setting our speed that way. So. Even though it it is a spreadsheet, there is some um kind of interpretation on our part, you know, whether something is a high risk or a low risk. Um so that's kind of what we go by our policy. We put um, you know, these. Factors down uh like it just kind of ends up, you know, you start, say, if you have a an arterial road that's an eighty. The more things that you put in that are sort of a hazard, it just kind of starts to drop it, you know, horizontal geometry issues, curves, vertical curves. You know, um roadside hazards, if there was a whole bunch of trees right there, or a pond near the edge, and it could be a hazard for somebody, cyclists and pedestrians. Uh additional intersections, a whole bunch of entrances. And so that's why as areas get more built up, they kind of, the speeds typically drop. So I just want to talk a little bit more about driver behavior. So we get a lot of requests to lower speed. And everybody that makes those requests, um they kind of think if we change the speed, then everyone's gonna drive that speed. That really isn't the case. Um eighty-five percent of people are speeding. Um but that includes people speeding one kilometer over as well. So. Uh the industry kind of uses like the eighty-fifth percentile to say, okay, eighty-five percent of drivers are going, you know, below this speed. Um and just to show you how little drivers adhere to to the posted speed. In August twenty-three on one nineteen, there was someone clocked doing a hundred and twenty-nine in the sixty. Um they ended up, uh they were from Owen Sound. I think the police didn't pursue them and ended up charging them later at their house in Owen Sound because they had their license plate. And another thing, I don't know if ever, it's just been uh transportation guys keeping up on this news lately, but there's been a huge thing in Wales lately. So the government has has put a lot of the uh built-up speed areas from thirty to twenty. Um and just the same is here. Some people are really supportive of that. Some people are just dead set against it. So. Even in Wales, four hundred fifty thousand people have signed signatures against it, which is a quarter of their drivers. So somebody thinks going from thirty to twenty is a good idea. But at least a quarter of the drivers think it isn't a good idea. And so clearly, people aren't gonna go that if they don't think it's a good idea. They've even had protests where they go on the highway and they're all driving fifty. Just to tell the government that they don't like this, uh this speed. People don't like rules to a certain extent, right? You like a rule when you agree with it, but when you don't agree with it, you don't want to do it. So it isn't just a gray problem, right? It isn't just a a Blue Mountain problem. Um it's everywhere in the world that uh some people are really concerned with speeding and some are not. The one thing everyone can agree on is if it results in an accident, the slower you're going, the safer it is for everyone involved, right? So um it's in everyone's interest to drive slower. It's just sometimes if the speed is too slow. Um does that create more accidents? So we've noticed some places we posted speed way below what our policy says. Uh it doesn't seem to have any effect. People just drive what they were driving before. Um so we're we're hesitant to do that because then you get a whole bunch of people lined up behind the guy who is going to speed limit. And um then they want to pass everybody. So maybe it creates more of a hazard. So we try to avoid that uh differential in speed. Um now, just to add the current area here on one nineteen, so we've received a lot of correspondence for and against speeding when we first lowered the speed on it. Um of course, we just paved the road as well. So it seemed like you could go faster. People felt quite comfortable going fast. It has paved shoulders. It's quite a nice uh road. Uh people are trying to get to the Blue Mountain. They don't want to delay uh their trip. Um you know, we had a lot of people really against us lowering of the speed in a few places. So we did some some data after the um after the uh delegation. So we're about seventy-one percent of people speeding in banks, which is lower than our our typical average. Um and the average speed is about seventy-five, but it's a four-way stop there, close to seventy. People go on seventy-five, kind of makes sense. It's, you, you know, a lot of people are already starting to slow down. Some. Uh some people, um like my daughter, maybe just jams on the brakes at the last minute right before the stop sign, right? So, hope she's not watching. Um and there in in banks, like eighty-five percent of people are going below eighty-four. So a lot of people do that too, right? Like, you know, the speed limit of seventy, you say you're cruising to eighty-four. Because you think you're not gonna lose points if you do get a ticket to the pub and have to pull you over. Well, there's all that stuff, right? So we kind of went over the road a little bit, and there is a section that we had kind of um west of banks that was sixty. And it re- that was really at the time chosen because there is two vertical curves that are are, you just can't quite have a stopping site distance. But we had kind of had a a, you know, a rethink of those. Those could be handled with a warning sign. So we're gonna, our our recommendation is to put a warning sign. Um and the areas that kind of have a little bit of a vertical hazard. Turn that sixty's old into a seventy. The area around banks, I know the delegation was hoping it would be a fifty, but we'd like to take it from a seventy to a sixty. We feel like a fifty is just too low. A sixty's a little bit lower. It's a slightly built-up area. It's a a long way from being a a hamlet, of course, but. Um there is people there that are, you know, living there and and uh there's a four-way stop there and the school bus is there and that type of thing. Um so we're recommending a sixty. And the other thing I just wanted to mention that we did. Um at the four-way stop, we did bring flashers in just to give people that little bit farther to see the stop sign, the flashing beacons. And then school bus ahead signs because we know there's school bus traffic there. And that is consistent with our other um four-way stops, which we don't have many of. Katie, for example, has the the flashing beacon uh as well. That's another four-way stop we have. So we felt it was consistent with that. We're not going outside, just going really nearly off our policy just based on one person's request. Uh so we feel like it still adheres to our policy. Um but I think people should be uh marginally happier. Uh the residents, hopefully, with with the new situation. So how we would implement that, um the next time our forty-seven eighty-eight dash thirteen comes through, it should be early in the new year, I would think. Uh because it they've used, there's some parking uh changes that need to come through and a couple other speed type changes. Uh there's always something that kind of, you know, needs a little tweaking. So next time we bring that, we would be implementing these changes at that time. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Pat. Marginally happy. That's good. That's what we want. Any questions? Now, seeing any, oh, Counselor Mattressaw.
Uh thank you, through you, the chair. Um I do, I do have an amendment to the main motion that I would like to move. And and if you would like, I will move the amendment and speak after if it, if there's a seconder and it's on. Okay. So my amendment would be to keep everything within the recommendation, the way that it's written, uh with the amendment. Uh but to amend table two to fifty kilometers per hour from three hundred meters west of banks to three hundred and sixty-five meters east of banks. That's the sole change.
Form of the development. Um, that all gets approved by your municipal councils. In the case of a plan of subdivision, it would get approved by county committee, the whole. Uh, and then you would work through the various processes, including a subdivision agreement and and in some cases, a site plan agreement. Uh, the developer would come in then at the very end of the process, if if they were applying for say a standard plan, a condominium condominium exemption process. And and show that they have support through through the municipality. They would show that they have all the administrative details tied up either in the site plan agreement or the subdivision agreement. And and really it would be just sort of formalizing that ownership model for that multi-residential block of land. Um, the the um, the current uh, application process for the county, as I said, exempts um, vacant land plans, a condominium. And exempts other forms of development whereby certain criteria have been met. Uh, so county staffer of the opinion that if we can demonstrate that uh, those criteria have been met. If we can demonstrate that uh, we have uh, support from the member municipality that's hosting the development. Uh, then there's no practical reason why we couldn't also include uh, vacant land plans, a condominium in this regard. It would also align nicely with some of the the province's uh, recent legislative and policy changes. Uh, which are all gearing towards uh, getting development uh, approvals in a quicker, more efficient fashion. Uh, so that's sort of the coles notes here, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any. Oh, just before I do, I should say that uh, legal services staff have been tremendously helpful. Uh, in in drafting this report and making sure we have all our our legal bases covered. So I'd like to thank uh, Michael Luther, Michael LaTerno for for his uh, support and and help on this one.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? I'll call a question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Scott. Next item is uh, seven C. It's a report regarding Gray Road one nineteen and the speed limit in banks. Someone care to move this, please? Councilor Nielsen and Councilor Mackey. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, uh, as uh, the warden said, yes, this is uh, came out of that delegation for the speed limit in banks. So you'll have your report here on page two seventy-five. TRC W dash twenty-one dash twenty-three. So if you look at page two seventy-six, the all the factors that go into our transportation association of Canada's uh, spreadsheet that kind of. You put your factors in and it kind of spits out a recommended speed at the bottom. It's kind of the way it works. There's additional factors in our own policy um, that end up setting our speed that way. So. Even though it it is a spreadsheet, there is some um, kind of interpretation on our part. You know, whether something is a high risk or a low risk. Um, so that's kind of what we go by our policy. We put um, you know, these. Factors down. Uh, like it just kind of ends up, you know, you start, say, if you have a an arterial road that's an eighty. The more things that you put in that are sort of a hazard, it just kind of starts to drop it, you know, horizontal geometry issues, curves, vertical curves. You know, um, roadside hazards, if there was a whole bunch of trees right there or a pond near the edge, and it could be a hazard for somebody, cyclists and pedestrians. Uh, additional intersections, a whole bunch of entrances. And so that's why as areas get more built up, they kind of, the speeds typically drop. So I just want to talk a little bit more about driver behavior. So we get a lot of requests to lower speed. And everybody that makes those requests, um, they kind of think if we change the speed, then everyone's going to drive that speed. That it really isn't the case. Um, eighty-five percent of people are speeding. Um, but that includes people speeding one kilometer over as well. So. Uh, the industry kind of uses like the eighty-fifth percentile to say, okay, eighty-five percent of drivers are going, you know, below this speed. And just to show you how little drivers adhere to to the posted speed. In August twenty-three on one nineteen, there was someone clocked doing a hundred and twenty-nine in the sixty. Um, they ended up, uh, they were from Owen Sound. I think the police didn't pursue them and ended up charging them later at their house in Owen Sound because they had their license plate. And another thing, I don't know if ever, it's just been uh, transportation guys. Keeping up on this news lately, but there's been a huge thing in Wales lately. So the government has has put a lot of the uh, built up speed areas from thirty to twenty. Um, and just the same is here. Some people are really supportive of that. Some people are just dead set against it. So. Even in Wales, four hundred fifty thousand people have signed signatures against it, which is a quarter of their drivers. So somebody thinks going from thirty to twenty is a good idea. But at least a quarter of the drivers think it isn't a good idea. And so clearly people aren't going to go that if they don't think it's a good idea. They've even had protests where they go on the highway and they're all driving fifty. Just to tell the government that they don't like this. Uh, this speed. People don't like rules to a certain extent, right? You like everyone when you agree with it, but when you don't agree with it, you don't want to do it. So. It isn't just a gray problem, right? It isn't just a a blue mountain problem. Um, it's everywhere in the world that uh, some people are really concerned with speeding and some are not. The one thing everyone can agree on is if it results in an accident, the slower you're going, the safer it is for everyone involved, right? So. Um, it's in everyone's interest to drive slower. It's just sometimes if the speed is too slow. Does that create more accidents? So. We've noticed some places we posted speed way below what our policy says. Uh, it doesn't seem to have any effect. People just drive what they were driving before. Um, so we're we're hesitant to do that because then you get a whole bunch of people lined up behind the guy who is going to speed limit. And um, then they want to pass everybody. So maybe it creates more of a hazard. So we try to avoid that uh, differential in speed. Um, now, just to add the current area here on one nineteen, so we've received a lot of correspondence for and against speeding when we first lowered the speed on it. Um, of course, we just paved the road as well. So it seemed like you could go faster. People felt quite comfortable going fast. It has paved shoulders. It's quite a nice uh, road. Uh, people are trying to get to the Blue Mountain. They don't want to delay uh, their trip. You know, we had a lot of people really against us lowering of the speed in a few places. So we did some some data after the um, after the uh, delegation. So we're about seventy-one percent of people speeding in banks, which is lower than our our typical average. Um, and the average speed is about seventy-five, but it's a four-way stop there, close to seventy. People go on seventy-five, kind of makes sense. It's you, you know, a lot of people are already starting to slow down. Some. Uh, some people, um, like my daughter, maybe just jams on the brakes at the last minute right before the stop sign, right? So, hope she's not watching. Um, and there in in banks, like eighty-five percent of people are going below eighty-four. So a lot of people do that too, right? Like, you know, the speed level seventy, you say you're cruising to eighty-four. Because you think you're not going to lose points if you do get a ticket to the pub and have to pull you over. Well, there's all that stuff, right? So we kind of went over the road a little bit, and there is a section that we had kind of um, west of banks that was sixty. And it re- that was really at the time chosen because there is two vertical curves that are are, you just can't quite have a stopping site distance. But we had kind of had a, uh, you know, a rethink of those. Those could be handled with a warning sign. So we're gonna, our our recommendation is to put a warning sign. Um, and the areas that kind of have a little bit of a vertical hazard. Turn that sixty's old into a seventy. The area around banks. Uh, I know the delegation was hoping it was be a fifty, but we'd like to take it from a seventy to a sixty. We feel like a fifty is just too low. A sixty is a little bit lower. It's a slightly built up area. It's a a long way from being a a hamlet, of course, but. Um, there is people there that are, you know, living there and and uh, there's a four-way stop there and the school bus is there and that type of thing. Um, so we're recommending a sixty. And the other thing I just wanted to mention that we did. Um, at the four-way stop, we did bring flashers in just to give people that little bit farther to see the stop sign. The flashing beacons and then school bus ahead signs because we know there's school bus traffic there. And that is consistent with our other. Um, four-way stops, which we don't have many of. Katie, for example, has the the flashing beacon. Uh, as well, that's another four-way stop we have. So we felt it was consistent with that. We're not going outside, just going really nearly off our policy, just based on one person's request. Uh, so we feel like it still adheres to our policy. Um, but I think people should be uh, marginally happier. Uh, the residents hopefully with with the new situation. So. How we would implement that, um, the next time our forty-seven eighty-eight dash thirteen comes through, it should be early in the new year, I would think. Uh, because it they've used, there's some parking. Uh, changes that need to come through and a couple of other speed type changes. Uh, there's always something that kind of, you know, needs a little tweaking. So next time we bring that, we would be implementing these changes at that time. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Pat. Marginally happy. That's good. That's what we want. Any questions? Now, seeing any, I'll, oh, Councilor Mattressoff.
Uh, thank you through you, the chair. Um, I do. I do have an amendment to the main motion that I would like to move. And and if you would like, I will move the amendment and speak after if it if there's a second or and it's on. Okay. So my amendment would be to keep everything within the recommendation, the way that it's written. Uh, with the amendment. Uh, but. To amend table two to fifty kilometers per hour. From three hundred meters west of banks to three hundred and sixty-five meters east of banks. That's the sole change that I'm looking for on this particular thing, and I'm happy to support it with my rationale if it's seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second here for that amendment? Oh, Councilor Burnin, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, perhaps you'd like to describe uh, your rationale, please.
Great, thank you very much through the chair um, to to Mr. Hoi, Director Hoi, but also to to my colleagues. Um, I I, first of all, I I thank staff for not just the report that's come forward, but the time that you've spent with me to help me understand. I've learned a lot in terms of the process and the formulas and how things work. But also to be, as you mentioned, considering that there's always um, an interpretation to the Excel charts as well. So I I think on that note. Uh, there are three points, the reasons why I'm going to see if uh, my colleagues agree to the amendment that I've proposed. Is uh, number one is yes, it's it's about a change in driver behavior. And uh, certainly the fact that there is a proposal minus for fifty kilometers, but even this the main motion of sixty kilometers. The fact that there's a decrease is a signal. It punctuates that families live there. That there's something of significance that you have to do your driver behavior a little differently because something is coming up ahead. And and I speak only with the example of banks because that's what the report is, but I echo it for all of. Our smaller communities along rural rural uh, roads. It it pains me when when people say, you hear them acknowledging that they changed their driver behavior. Because it's in quotation marks, just a rural road. And that that really bothers me that the same child that lives there doesn't get the same kind of recognition as the child that's living in an urban area. And that is that that's an a a concern I share for across all of our our nine municipalities. So I believe by doing a drop, whichever drop it ends up being supported, will send out that signal. In in conjunction with the signage and as well, I think that's a really good formula to the I. I very much appreciated of the the new signs that already exist to be able to signal to people that there is that four-way stop coming up, that that is a s- a school bus zone. But then also hearing about um, the the consideration about warning signs, how you can do a warning sign. I think that will. That helps the law-abiding or the maybe only slightly over, not the stunt drivers. That helps the. People who drive above the speed limit but are trying to pay attention to it. And I do, the reason I'm not asking for any other changes to the table is because I believe the change to. The seventy before banks and seventy after banks really helps eliminate the confusion. As I live there, I use that road when I have to, but actually it's not the best route to get to Blue Mountain. The best route is to go down Gray Road forty and on to twenty-six. But. I live there and I have to focus and figure it, make sure I'm following the existing up and down of the the kilometer signs, the speed limit signs. So I think it's very helpful to provide that consistency, and that's why I'm leaving that one there. Um, number two is that we do have OPP presence. They can't be there all the time, but we do have a history of of being there. And fifty kilometers per hour would give them more teeth. It would mean that when somebody is really excessively going over the speed. That now that could actually make and break the difference, and maybe somebody will think twice about how fast they're going there. It would give them the clout. It would give them the ability to actually pursue what what is a fair. Um, a a a a fair assignment uh, according to the what the over limit that's been committed. And the third one is, is that it would send a message to Google Maps and all the others in terms of the algorithm. Because if it continues to pick this up as the best route to get to Blue Mountains, it's wrong. It's not the best route. The best route is down Gray Road two, on to Gray Road forty, on to twenty-six, and you're at the base of the mountain. Especially in bad weather. So um, or. Use Gray Road nineteen, depending on where it is you're trying to go through. So there are two really valuable routes that Gray County already supports. And I would like, that's my third rationale between to do that, that it would actually start to tweak that algorithm. And the automated systems that send out your best route would start reconsidering that one because of the extra drop to fifty kilometers. Um, there certainly have been, even in twenty twenty-three. You know, when I hear of the incidents that are shared with me, this crash hit a hydro pole, this crash hit a a tree. This is just twenty twenty-three, just just focusing on those. It that could have been a person. It could have been equestrian, could have been our horse traffic. It could have been a person. It could have been another vehicle. Um, we were lucky. It was only a tree or a hydro pole. So thank you very much, Warden.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other questions related to the amendment? Council McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Just a clarity. So looking at table two. Right now, it's recommend recommending a point three six five meters east of intersection. Of rural nineteenth fourth line to be sixty, and your amendment is to change that to fifty. Just for clarity, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Greg.
Thanks, Warden Mill. Uh, I won't support the amendment. Uh, there has to be a rationale in terms of our decision-making. Uh, processes and uh, somewhat of a policy or. Or some sort of a framework that we apply. Otherwise. Uh, if we're going on a simply in the an emotion, emotional level, um. We won't stop around Gray County and on every road. I can just think of pretty mon- pretty much non-stop on Gray Road one. Uh, in its full continuity, uh, Island View Drive, uh, the amount of residences. Along that stretch. Uh, you might as well make it entirely a fifty zone, or you're setting yourself up for. Uh, a resident after a resident after a resident to come forward and and ask you to make it a fifty, and you don't have a whole lot to lean on if you're basing your decisions off emotion. I will note at the AMO conference, I sat in on a conference uh, curbing uh, driving behaviors. Uh, fifty-five percent of drivers uh, at the age of eighteen to thirty-four, when leaving an automated speed enforcement zone, and I think. Of a stop sign in somewhat the same context. Uh, are more likely to speed up to make up for the the time loss uh, as they uh, have been trying to. Uh, go through the patrolled area more uh, at a slower rate. Forty-nine percent of those are males, forty-eight percent of those are non-GTA. So uh, these are driving behaviors that um. Are not specific to any uh, particular demographic. They're broad. Uh. The rationale for table two is based on on engineering principles, and you've got to have something to lean on. So uh. It's. It's a driving behavior. People speed up. Uh, at the end of the day, it will be further enforcement of. By the OPP and you're in the lower tier municipality. To curb anything, but um, those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions on the amendment itself? Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, Warden Mill. A question for Director Hoi, if I may. Uh, Counselor Greg's bringing up a good point in terms of rationale and and your um, policies and procedures that exist. Having been at the last couple of Good Road conferences and such, there's a conversation around. Uh, the policies that exist are around the car itself. And not the pedestrians. And as we look at um, interactions between those two elements, there's. Um, suggested changes in policies to uh, consider the pedestrian when it comes to the roadway, whereas. A lot of our roadways, especially county roads, which are your through fares, your your objective is moving traffic. Can you just speak to um, the policies and that exist now and the relationship between whether the policies are there in place for the car? And the protection of the car and the efficiency of the car, or whether there is conversation, or at least part of the policy does reflect on the pedestrian interaction with the roadway?
Yes, I could comment on that. Um. Yeah, I like our thinking, you know, the right away is for everybody. Right? Um, so everybody gets to use it, whether it's an agriculture vehicle or Mennonites, uh, old order uh, folks. Um, you know, pedestrians, cyclists, guy on a scooter, you know, e-bikes. Um, so we're kind of thinking of everybody's safety, but there's all, you're always toeing that line where people do need to get where they're going. Um, like even what, looking at Savannah, Savannah's presentation, how many people work away from the municipality? The number is quite shocking, really, how many people have to drive to work somewhere. Um, and they want to get there, right? So um, we're always kind of in in toeing that line on trying to make everyone as safe as they can. We just feel if we lower the speed limits too much, nobody's going to go it anyway. And um, and those factors are in our policy as far as if there's a road with a lot of cyclists on it. If there's a road with a lot of pedestrians, a lot of intersections, a lot of driveways, the speed kind of gets pulled down that way. So though all those factors do. Uh, kind of come in. Uh, again, we sometimes have to do some legwork because. We're, I don't live there. You know, you don't know exactly how many pedestrians there are unless you're out there. We don't really count pedestrians. We typically count vehicles. Um, so I think those policies or those factors are brought in. Um, but again. People who maybe are new to the area are. Surprised by the speed of rural vehicles. Because I, yeah, like the road I live on, Georgian Bluffs, is a sixty. Most people aren't going sixty. Like, some people are going a hundred. Like, you know, you're, you you do feel uncomfortable when they drive by, you're walking your dog or whatever. But it's hard to control that. Uh, and you know, I don't, we kind of feel like, and we've talked to the OPP about this. Sometimes creating an artificially low speed zone that nobody adheres to. I I don't think it makes their job any easier. Um. Are they supposed to take it every car that drives by? Like I, so that's, that's why we just, we do the best we can with our policy. Uh, again, like with a international problem. Why does any car go over a hundred and ten? At all? Shouldn't that be in the auto plant to do that? Like, no one has to go over a hundred and ten. So why do they? I don't know. You know, why are you asking? Like, every driver still wants their own. Behavior. Right? So like, it's one of those questions that it's hard to have an answer, but we do factor in all the groups that are on the road.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions? Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you through you, Warden. Is there a map? Um, that shows. And I'm pretty sure there was one, but I couldn't find it uh, when I was reviewing it recently. Uh, the. That would show what it was. At currently and what you're proposing. Because you're changing. You're going up. From a sixty to a seventy, you're going up from a fifty to a seventy, but the section of the road is different. Than than what you're proposing. And and I, and I think I would be able to understand it better with a visual. Sorry to kind of land that on you at the last minute, and it could be after the fact.
Does anybody have access to something like that? Oh. Okay. Sarah's gonna try to find something. Oh, Pat has, oh, Pat has, okay.
Yeah, and I will apologize for that because it would have been nice to get uh, another map into this report because we have done it in the past. Well, this is what the fifth time one nineteen's been back. Um, so we have done that for other reports. Uh, we didn't do it this time. We were just a bit under the time crunch, and we don't do our own maps anymore, and GNS does, and it's just a little, so. I could, we could produce that. We have a little map in there showing where we were recommending the sixty. Uh, in the attachments. But as far as for one and the other, showing what they were and what they. Um, typically in the forty-seven eighty-eight, we do that. Uh, when we bring that report back, but since it's just kind of a. Um, a different one we didn't, but we probably shouldn't. So I apologize for that. That is a good point.
Okay. Thanks, uh, Andrea for helping there. All right, on the amendment itself, any further discussion? I'll call a question on the amendment. All those in favor? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine. Ten. Anyone else want to put their hand in the air? Okay, that's ten in favor, so I'll care, I'll call that carried. Thank you. Um. So back to the amendment, the main motion. Back, Counselor Kenner, did you have a point?
There we go. Um. I I just don't understand after all the time it has taken to deal with this and and all the effort put into the delegation. Uh, why we're postponing actually, you know, implementing these changes uh. Like I would would hope it can just be done as. As expeditiously as reasonable. And uh, it just seems like it is being put off to just fit our schedule. So I I just wondered if this. If that's something that uh, in deference to the people who have the. Uh, you know, warned us about this uh, on a number of occasions and are are, you know. Concerned about it. I think it would be uh, good if we could act on it just as. As you know, we normally can rather than. Putting it down the road to a to a juncture where, yeah, we'll we'll do that when when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Pat, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we could bring the forty-seven eighty-eight bylaw back. Um, and then we'll bring it back again. Like, you know, you're you're not doing something when you're doing something twice. So. You know, we kind of figured we're bringing forty-seven eighty-eight back shortly, January, something. We'll put all the changes in together. It is a lot of work to go to the bylaw for clerks and stuff, but um, that's really why we put it there. Um, but we can do as many times as you want. Um, but it it just comes a point when every time someone requests a speed change, we're going to bring bylaw back. It just. You wonder how much work that would end up being, or how how much, it would end up being delays to other things that we're working on.
Just looking at the recommendation, does it call? It just says future update to bylaw forty-seven eighty-eight. If someone would like to offer another amendment, I'm open to that. Because I think the future you mentioned would be January. Yeah. Okay, not seeing any. I'll ask the. Go ahead. Do you have something, Russ?
Sorry, I know I I I, if it's January, January is not that far away, and I I certainly don't expect them to do the work twice. I just didn't, I didn't quite understand. So thank you for the clarification, Pat.
Very good, thank you. So we're back to the amended motion. The original motion as amended. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Yeah, that one carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat. Um, okay, the next one is non-union compensation policy. Uh, Jen Moreau is going to speak to this one. Could I have someone move the motion, please? Counselor Mack, McKay, and Counselor Pringle. Almost, almost. All righty, Jen, welcome.
Warden Mill and members of um, County Council, I'm before you to talk about non-union compensation. I apologize. Unlike my esteemed colleague, I'm not sure what Wales is doing regarding non-union compensation. So we're only going to talk about Ontario. He's not paying any attention anyway. So on September fourteenth, I was before you, and we discussed uh, non-union compensation project in our market review. And within that report, I asked for direction to bring back a policy. Um, that would look after a few matters and keep things on track until such point as we do another review. And uh, this report brings that together as a fulsome report. Uh, so the compensation policy itself details how often a compensation review will be done. How staff will maintain the non-union compensation structure between reviews. Uh, how we use the non-union job evaluation process, how we would conduct annual salary administration. And how salary administration will be applied during formal acting responsibilities or demotions. Uh, and how we will handle internal promotions. Uh, you have a copy of the policy attached to the staff report itself, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions? Not seeing any questions. I will call the question. All those in favor? Uh, he's carried. Thank you, Jen. Uh, final item this morning, our almost final item is seven E. It's the Committee of the Whole. Uh, report deferred motion from our last meeting regarding the proposed housing and green space project. At the Georgian Bay Community School Track, and our C O Kim Wingrove is going to speak to that one. Kim.
Good morning, Council. Um, to update you, um, after our last meeting, and as you directed, I approached the Blue Water District School Board. With our interest in the property in Mayford, and they undertook some internal discussions and then. Um, got back to me and let me know that um, they were not interested in any further negotiations at this time with us, and will be proceeding. Um, with their with their own process. So we don't, there's nothing further as far as as that negotiation to proceed at this time.
So to. So to deal with the motion that was on the floor and was deferred. I'm going to ask Shirley, uh, Counselor Keveney, if she has. Uh, a notion to what she would like to do with this motion as the original mover.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And after receiving this update from C O Wind Grove regarding the outcome of discussions with the school board. I will withdraw the motion before us at this point in time. Um, as Kim said, there's no further action that can be taken, so I just want to express my appreciation. Um, as Kim said, there's no further action that can be taken, so I just want to express my appreciation to. Him and to staff for their efforts in in approaching the school board with this matter. And I want to also express my gratitude to members of County Council for their support. As you know, this this. Could have been a great project, I think, as a partnership between Miford and the County of Gray, but we always knew that this. Occom was a possibility, but I'll just close by saying it was worth a try. So thank you, everyone, for your part in this.
Thank you, Shirley. And Ross, you were the second for that motion. Are you okay with the withdrawal?
I am. Uh, I would second the motion to withdraw and also add my thanks to. Uh, members of County Council for the support that you you gave us here, and I think we we still have. Uh, a model here uh for a kind of cooperation uh and way of addressing uh the housing crisis uh in Gray County. And hopefully there will be some uh further opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Counselor Body.
It seems to me we're still dealing with a provincial government policy that doesn't make sense. We've got a need for housing. We've got open land. We've got a educational board of. Provincial education minister or ministry decision that they should get fair market value. That makes totally sense in some circumstances, but in a situation where a municipality or a different level of government is trying to buy land. That was bought for ten bucks per acre, whatever, in eighteen fifty two. I'd like, I don't know the numbers, but. A long time ago to get fair market value when we need housing, it seems to me that there is one heck of a disconnect here. And I wonder if we shouldn't be writing to Minister of Municipal Affairs and to Education, saying, can you look at this policy? And um. Uh, perhaps even intervene in a specific uh situation like this. Uh, overall, the policy needs to change to account for municipalities trying to build housing, but I I think. They've got to be able to intervene in a situation like this, and I I think it's a disconnect.
Well, I certainly wouldn't disagree, and and although I I would parse a little bit from Counselor Kivini's remarks. I don't believe this is the end of the conversation. Uh, even if the school board goes to market, there may or may not be a buyer at whatever price they think they're going to get it. Get to. But uh, in the interim, uh, absolutely, we need to. Lobby, advocate that this isn't right. And I I doubt very much if we're in the. We're the only ones in this situation. I'm sure this situation has happened in other places, so. Uh, absolutely, I think we need to advocate, and we will. Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I sort of echo the comments from. Uh, Mayor of On Sound to say that uh I I I wasn't here during the last meeting, but I. Sort of would say not to withdraw it because I think, as you know, we had a number of years back, an issue with the school in Markdale. That we had to be very much. Uh, an advocacy in the sense of uh supporting it being or moving forward. My point is, Mr. Warden is. Uh, and I guess through you to the C A O, the just the comment that came back was from the director of the Blue Water School Board, or did it go in front of the board? My 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 thinking is is maybe we need to do a delegation in front of the board. The simple fact is, this is a unique situation about affordable. Housing, it's got to have some merit on that part. And so, yeah, you can get it for the highest dollar, but at the end of the day, what's the win-win? And so I. I may have a comment back, but I just wanted the comment came back from the director or from the chair or how what how did it come back from the sense of this? Not interested, or they got to go through this process.
Thank you for the question, Counselor McQueen, and it is my understanding that the matter was put on the agenda of a committee. And I want to say business operations, and I know that's not quite correct, but it did go to a committee of the board. Um, to be discussed on, I think it was September the fifth. I will also um note to counsel that we have in the past. Um, had discussions either with our um elected representatives or with the provincial ministry directly. We, at the time of the Sidney purchase. We had a number of discussions on this matter. We did delegate at A M O on this, and we did speak to the M P P. Um, earlier this summer, indicating our our interest and our hope that we would be able to move a. A project forward, and unfortunately, we weren't successful in that, so.
Thank you for that, uh, CEO. So it sounds like something that us. From the Great Highlands area and around had some familiar experiences with the board with the decision of the of the Markdale School. It. It was a important part of the board that made the decision. It took a lot of up and see. And then all of a sudden, something changed. And I feel sort of banging my finger here, but I feel that this is something that I think uh, you know, uh, surely and. And others around this table, uh, we do have a school board that's elected. Represent uh uh Revers. I don't know if there's been a a follow-up to those representatives, but I think it's, I I really think that this. You know, from what I know about this and and what was presented last meeting is this makes a lot of sense. And so I propose that don't drop it and make a delegation request in front of that board. Whether it's the the warden and the mayor of uh Miford or or whatever, because. Sometimes you gotta, you know, you just don't take no for an answer. You gotta step up and you gotta make those comments, and I strongly feel that. We hear it, we we know it, we we we, you know, even the province is saying this. So why wouldn't they not support something that's? A a multiple partnership from a from a, I mean, yes, I guess it hasn't been deferred, but say, you know, if there was in principle. The the idea of a county and and lower tier working together. Who's the last one in that that at that discussion would be the province, right? So why wouldn't we work forward to that? I mean, that's what you like to see is partnership and municipal and all that kind of stuff. So I put it out there for other discussion that I think. There needs to be something, just not just take no for an answer, and they got to go through their process. I think we need to push a little bit here. I'll look for other comments.
If I can add, I. I do believe that at the present time, the regulatory environment does require. The school board to obtain what they call fair market value, and so if there's a situation where um. Potentially, there's, you know, multiple appraisals or whatever, and and they feel that. They're in a position to secure a higher value than than what other another party um might be willing to pay. Um, I feel that potentially their hands are tied. We benefited from the time, at the time um of the Sidney purchase, there was a provincial program. That we were able to take advantage of that allowed us some um room to negotiate or an avail uh an avenue to have those different discussions. I'm just not, I'm not aware that there's anything like that available to us right now. It doesn't mean that there's any harm at all in having further conversations. I think, you know, anytime. Continue to make this situation and the problems it creates for us known. The better and the more potential it is that we'll get that regulatory environment adjusted in the future. Um, but I do think that's the really the the foundation of the decision that that committee made was really about the fact that. They're just bound by the regulation at this time.
So this is the finish. Thank you. Thanks for those comments. So I guess it's about a business plan, and a business plan could say, yeah, we'll sell it for the highest bidder. They put housing for profit. That's a good business plan. But the other business plan could be what we're talking about here is a business plan that's working from uh. Uh, upper and lower tier municipal government with a plan to work forward or move forward with. For housing, that's a business plan, and I think, you know, uh. Yeah, it it maybe the policy doesn't. Receive business plans, but I think that's a different business plan that needs to be presented, whether it has has merit or it gets the attention, but. I don't know. From my experience with the Bluewater School Board, I'm not sure if those meetings are recorded. Can we go back and watch that meeting or is it like? Like you said, September fifth, and so you said September fifth, it was in the front of the front of the school board? Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Counselor McHattner.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Warden and through you. Uh, then I I think we need a motion to uh send a send a uh. Uh, to to make the uh Minister of Housing and the Minister of uh of Education both aware of the uh. The uh opportunity here and and the 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 roadblock. And just ask them for clarification, whether this is really in the best interest uh of, and especially when the province is pushing to uh. You know, move heaven and earth to get more houses built.
Thank you, Ross. Uh, we currently have a motion on the floor to withdraw, so I'll just get you to. Sit tight on that one for a second. So we have a motion to withdraw, and I would suggest it is in order because, of course, uh, staff did do what was directed in the motion originally, and it came back. It's kind of a moot point now, so. Uh, I will ask if there's any further com- comments on the uh motion to withdraw. Counselor Greg.
Thank you, and through you, Warden, just a quick comment. Um, Counselor Kivini had uh had a good uh motion here and um. The intentions are are really, really well thought out in terms of the staff report coming back and. Uh, last meeting I had some issues with the procedural component, but I really like the staff, the staff report. Uh, component to this. Is future reporting on this type of in an initiative, something that we could expect to be an outcome of the housing summit? Or what might staff's plans be in terms of future reporting back on? Um, properties that we may wish to pursue that or partnerships uh in the foreseeable future, understanding it's such a high need.
Good question. Who wants to take a run at that one? Randy, go ahead.
In terms of of opportunities that that may arise, obviously, those those come up from time to time and obviously trying to. Uh, bring those forward uh through through the proper process so that um, you know, potential partners and. Councils obviously aware and can provide direction in terms of whether or not to pursue those opportunities or not. Um, I just would note that um, there is still some work being done with respect to surplus lands. That are currently owned by either county or municipal properties, and so that report, we're hoping to bring back to the next, uh, I believe the next Community Services Committee meeting. Uh, in terms of potential next steps of 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 moving some uh forward with some of that. Uh, that work or not, uh, based on cut some of the costs uh uh associated with trying to get some of those land shovel ready. Or or looking at opportunities for how we can best utilize those properties. Um, going forward, recognizing that they're they're a true asset and can maybe help uh. Uh, address some of the those deeply affordable housing needs that we know uh exist throughout our communities.
Okay, Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you through you, Warden, and I just wonder, I know that. Uh, that the motion on the is to withdraw. Um, and to create a new motion would be contravention of. Procedure, but it wouldn't prohibit. A someone bringing a no a notice of motion at the next meeting to direct staff to create a delegation to. Advocate to the province, the Minister Municipal Affairs and Housing, if I'm correct. Uh, nothing prohibits that from happening, and and it might be something that. Um, would be encouraged and possibly supported, I think, around this table. Um, I did have a a question, and I don't believe that it can be answered, but who determines fair market value? If one has, you know, the seller has a, you know, a a a. An elevated sense or realtor who's given them an elevated value. And and a and a buyer who has come back to the table with, we have a fair market value. Um, determined by our realtor. Um, and I I'm not asking for an answer, but just saying.
I dare say it's willing buyer, willing seller. Counselor Body.
Sorry, delay. Uh, just it's probably a question from this warder and. Threading the needle here. We had a motion enclosed, and we have this motion which was in public that was deferred. This removes the one that was in public deferred, but does not. Affect the one that was enclosed.
Yeah, the the direction that was given to staff at the closed meeting, last meeting um has been undertaken, and there's nothing, it's tied up and finished now. There's nothing further to.
Okay, we're back to the motion to withdraw. Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Now that completes our uh regular agenda. Now we come back to consent item six A. Was that correct? Uh, six A? Yes. So I need a mover and seconder for. Six A, Counselor Mattressovs. Counselor Pringle, thank you very much. Counselor Greg, did you wish to speak to that, please?
Yes, please. Uh, my comments uh are that uh a week ago, uh, councils. Uh, provided a list of various consent items of which. Uh, counselors may have an opportunity to pick any of those items and and then ask for them to be on the the council agenda. This one firstly caught my eye as to why it's just a piece of correspondence that got treated differently than. Uh, the other half dozen items, for example, that were were canvassed with. Uh, and then secondly, why the the county would take a position. To not just receive the correspondence in unless County Council. Uh, made the decision then to support or further. Uh, because I think the default should be just to receive, and then it should be up to council. This, I mean, everybody is united here in terms of wanting to pay. Uh, as much as we can to for wages across the board, public, private. Uh, but I do have a problem with the simplicity of the motion in itself from Grimsby. Uh, unless we are a room full of tax accountants. Uh, who probably know tax tables uh off the back of your hand. And are well versed in federal income supports on top of provincial income supports, then I feel like. Uh, what we're given for information in the motions just not comprehensive enough in terms of forming a position. I think our role is. Um, as counselors is to be as well informed as we can. And this motion has much greater. Far, far broader macroeconomic um. Impacts than just to take a simple position of. We support a uh living wage at X because it is a very big conversation. I don't think the document is. Uh, sufficient of that, so I would move an amendment that we just receive uh the item for information.
Okay, there's been an emotion to amend to receive. Sir Seconder. Counselor McKay. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? That is carried. So now we're back to the amended or the original motion as amended to simply receive. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay. We have no closed meeting matters. Is there any? Sorry, Counselor Body.
Yeah, sorry, I I just I just note after we left the notice of motion, I believe we're going to come back to uh Counselor Cantner for his motion that would have been part of that notice of motion, so it wouldn't need a. For that motion, so it wouldn't need a notice, I wouldn't think, but we kind of skipped past it, and I thought he was going to uh move something. I'm maybe putting everyone on the spot, but that was my understanding. So I'm just, we moved on on the uh on the calendar before you went back to him to their schedule.
I believe when we uh, after Counselor DeBreen's remarks was that. At a future point in a, if someone could raise a notice of motion to deal with the matter at hand, so that's kind of how it was left. I believe that was your. Your uh proposal. Yeah, so that's kind of where it was left. So I mean, at any time, you know, and we're almost there where I'm going to ask if there's any notices of motion.
And here we are. I, yeah, I I would definitely like to make the motion, and I appreciate the. Um, Counselor Bodies uh prodding on this, uh, and I also, I heard it in the room earlier, uh, actually from from the media that uh. And the suggestion was, in fact, and this needs to be researched, that that property may in fact have been donated. Uh, to the school board at the original time. I have no idea about that, but I think we need to investigate that, but I think we ought to uh be uh sending um. A letter to the uh the Ministers of Housing and Education to point out the uh. A letter to the uh, the Ministers of Housing and Education to point out the uh, not just the kind of silliness of the present. Uh, uh, ruling, but also the fact that there's a case in point here in Owen Sound where uh. You know, a uh, an effort to uh, support the province's drive for more housing is being, you know, uh. foreclosed.
Okay. Sorry, I, I shut your microphone off. I apologize. Go ahead. I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
So that, that's just a notice of motion and we'll bring forward a motion of the next meeting. Is that what you're saying?
I guess what I'm asking is if you, if you'd rather wait and make a notice of motion, that's fine. Or if you'd rather propose a motion right now, that's fine too.
I'm getting a red light. The, the, the ma- the way they made these microphones, you can't see the red light. Um, yeah, I would like to make that motion uh, right at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor McQueen?
Hey, we, we would like the motion to uh, actually uh, call on the ministers to intervene uh, so that uh, you know, this can be rectified.
There, he shut the microphone off this time. And I have a seconder in Counselor McQueen. So any discussion, Counselor DeBree?
Through you, Warden Mel and to the mover and seconder uh, intervene, but would there be an opportunity uh, to your point that? That we might be able to do a little bit of investigation beforehand as to whether or not the property was indeed. Originally donated. Might give us leverage as well as uh. Perhaps speaking to our fair market value that we did seek.
Yeah, I think it would behoove us to do a little bit of research before we send the letter, of course, and make sure we're, we're on uh, solid ground, so to speak. Counselor McQueen.
So to intervene or how it's worded, it gets typed up here, but um. I was told or have been told, others have been told that I know a lot of times you make a delegation, you, you usually do it at A M O or you do it at Roma. But they all, I've also been told that you can make a delegation at eight time. So. I think there's a, a timing issue here and, and uh. I would say that, I don't know. The mover would make a small amendment or not. I'm just throwing it out there, but that delegation request be made.
Certainly that could be part of the letter. Here's our case and we'd like to meet with you about it. Right? No, no, absolutely not. You're okay with that, Ross? Yes. Okay, Counselor Body.
My only responsibility to uh, Counselor DeBree, then I'm not sure we need to wait for the research to send the letter. I think we get at her and uh, send, ask for the delegation, ask for them to intervene and uh, do our research while we're, while we're preparing.
Okay. Let's get at her. All right. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ross. Sure you can. Go ahead. Madam Clerk, if you do the uh, roll, please.
Counselor Mackey. Ma- Counselor Mackey in favor, Counselor McKay. Counselor McKay in favor, favor, Counselor Carlton. Counselor Carlton in favor, Counselor Pringle. Counselor Pringle in favor, Counselor McQueen. Counselor McQueen in favor, Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Nielsen in favor, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson in favor, Counselor Dickert. Counselor Dickert in favor, Counselor Kentner. Counselor Kentner is in favor, Counselor Kivney.
In favor.
Counselor Kivney is in favor, Counselor Body. Counselor Body in favor, Counselor Greg. Counselor Greg is in favor, Warden Milne.
In favor.
Warden Milne in favor, Counselor DeBree. Counselor DeBree in favor, Counselor Mattressovs. Counselor Mattressovs in favor, Counselor Borneo.
In favor.
Counselor Borneo in favor, Counselor Echoes. Counselor Echoes in favor, Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson in favor, that is carried unanimously, unanimously ninety-six to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any closed uh, meeting matters? Don't believe so. Any other business? Notice of motion? One further motion. Counselor Bordenier, you want to get in the game here? Do you want to make a motion?
Motion adjourned, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to second that? Counselor Hutchinson would? Very good. Hey, in discussion, all those in favor? That is carried. I'm advised that lunch is here, has been here for a small period of time. So enjoy your lunch, ladies and gentlemen.